Let us bring the September 26 Avon Town Council meeting to order and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and this republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
I apologize, my microphone did not have batteries. Would that work? Robert Pope?
Present.
Bill Holland?
Present.
Jason Puckett?
Present.
Don Loudon?
Present.
Greg Zuzen?
Present. We have a quorum. First thing on the agenda is the consent agenda, the check register and the work session minutes and the regular meeting minutes. Does anybody have any questions or concerns with those items? If not, would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Don Loudon?
Four.
Bill Holland?
Four.
Jason Puckett?
Four.
Greg Zuzen?
Four.
Robert Pope?
Four.
Next item on the agenda is the first of two public comment opportunities. The public may comment on items on the agenda that are not a public hearing or on a specific matter within the council's jurisdiction. Please come forward and state your name and address and limit your comments to three With nobody coming forward then, we'll move on to council comment and liaison reports. Mr. Holland?
I have no comment this evening. Thank you.
Ms. Loudon?
Nothing for me to report.
Mr. Puckett?
Nothing for me. Same thing, nothing for me.
I'll break the ice. I just, we had a plant commission meeting on the 23rd. Hope that was doing the Habitat for Humanity was continued and we did hear the Washington Township Fire Department, there's a couple of items outstanding, so that, after that presentation, that was continued as well. Next item is new business authorized police department vehicle financing.
Yes, thank you. As you guys are aware, we had budgeted for the purchase of five vehicles this year. I did include in your packet, this is pretty typical process for us in order to pay for the vehicles, we kind of have a rotation schedule of our replacement cycle. And so the police are asking to buy five vehicles and we would like to finance those. I did give you a copy of the financing profile and what we're doing. You can see we have about $133,000 left this year to go towards payments. It's unlikely that we'll actually make payments this year, they'll probably start next year based on Julie's estimates, but we do need authorization from you guys to proceed forward with that financing and I'll maybe turn it over to Julie really quick and she can tell you about the quotes she got financed.
So like you said, the first payment's not actually going to be due till March of next year, so we'll have no funds this year we'll be using. I did go out and get a couple quotes from different banks. Henderson County Bank and Trust came back with a 6.5, State Bank came back with 5.34, and Citizens Bank, who's the winner, came back with a 4.25, and that is our normal 36-month semi-annual payment, it's the same as always. So we will be, if you guys authorize this, we'll be closing on that loan tomorrow with Citizens.
That's just one loan with all five vehicles.
It's one loan for five vehicles, yeah. It ended up being 247, 249, something like that, it should be in your packet, but.
So then my last question, on the spreadsheet you gave us, the 2025 payment amounts, that's what's remaining plus this new 247?
Yes.
Okay.
And we do have, I believe, one or two vehicles gonna be falling off in '25 as well.
Right. Any other questions for Julia, for Ryan, or even for David?
So there's additional cost for retrofitting the vehicles, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Is that funding going to be carried over from this year or is it in the budget for next year?
It's in the budget already for this current year.
No, we have the money now and we're getting them, they're already in stock. So as soon as we sign on the dotted line, we're gonna go get the vehicles and they'll be outfitted this year with this year's money.
Excellent, thank you.
If there are no other questions, would somebody like to make a motion?
I have one question. Dave, were these the cars that we ordered in 2024 then that are finally coming in or?
Finally coming in, yes. So we'll order the 25s, the gentleman's putting the quote together for Brian right now, we'll order them the beginning of next year and we probably won't see them until this time in 2025, it's just taking that long to get them.
Okay.
Do we need to authorize, in our motion authorize Julie to make payment on this?
We're essentially just agreeing to the financing.
You're agreeing to all the [inaudible].
We entertain a motion, then. I make a motion that we approve, or we authorize the police department vehicle financing as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Robert Pope?
Four.
Jason Puckett?
Four.
Bill Holland?
Four.
Greg Zuzen?
Four.
Don Loudon?
Four.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. Next item on the agenda is to accept the annexation petitions from Washington Township. Mr. Cannon?
Yes, we received a couple petitions, we received four petitions from Washington Township. If you guys recall, the Carnoustie annexation that we're doing, the township had four parcels, one was for the fire station on 525, and then the other three were actually park properties that are on County Road 625 East. And so even though I had some conversations with the township, and as you guys know, that's a voluntary annexation, we didn't necessarily need their petitions, we had enough to move forward with the voluntary annexation, but I did say that I thought it would be a nice gesture on their part to agree to annexation, and so I'm happy to say that Ryan Miller took it to the board and the board did approve signing annexation petition. So these are on here for you guys' acceptance tonight and then it will just continue forward, it'll be additional petitions we have for the Carnoustie annexation. The second one is for the Meyer parcel, which I know you guys have had this rezoning introduced to you, and if you guys recall, there was a part, a house, kind of a remnant parcel that the Meyer development was gonna surround on 900, and Meyer had been working towards trying to get a deal with that property owner, they have now done that, and so they are asking for that parcel to be annexed into Avon as well, so you also have a petition from Meyer for that parcel. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Taylor, do we need to do these separately or can we do them as one?
We can do them as one.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Cannon? Would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the Washington Township annexation petition and the Meyer annexation petition as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Greg Zuzen?
Four.
Bill Holland?
Four.
Don Loudon?
Four.
Robert Pope?
Four.
Jason Puckett?
Four.
Next item on the agenda is to award a quote for the mower for the Parks Department. Shelby?
Good evening, Shelby Pride, Parks Director. I'm so sorry, my throat got dry as soon as I started to come up here. You have the, in your packet, the memo that I typed for you guys, we have an outstanding, not an outstanding, leftover PO funds from last year that we had with a company. The reason it was left over is when we ordered an RTV at the end of last year, we encumbered those funds, and then when the RTV came in, we didn't take it from there, we just took it from the food and beverage account accidentally. So we have this PO, my maintenance superintendent and I discussed maybe what could we use this for, and with the addition of the sports fields and additional park properties coming online in the next year, we thought maybe adding a new mower would be, this would be a great opportunity for that. So we went out and sought quotes, Booth Machinery had the lowest quote, that is who our PO was from, and the quote was for $14,950. So I would ask your permission to move forward with awarding this quote.
Any questions for Shelby?
What kind of warranty came with these, with these quotes?
Um, they're all the same, yeah, because the manufacturer, it's all the same manufacturer, it's the exact same mower on each quote.
And we've worked with Booth Machinery before?
Oh, yes, yeah, they're located in Crawfordsville, so they're, they're really easy to work with, they help us if we need, you know, mechanical stuff, they come pick our stuff up and take it back to their shop, they're great.
And if I look at the expense account summary, you have $20,000 encumbered, this is only $14,950.
Correct.
What do you do with the remaining balance at the end of the year then?
With the remaining, we could order some parts that can be stored in the maintenance barn that we purchase a lot of, we can order those through Booth since they've supplied two of our RTVs that we currently have and two of the mowers that we currently have, we can order blades, belts, mower parts, things like that, that way we're not wasting that money.
Okay. Any other questions for Shelby? Would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the quote from Booth Machinery in the amount of $14,950 for the new mower as presented.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Greg Zuzen?
Four.
Robert Pope?
Four.
Jason Puckett?
Four.
Bill Holland?
Four.
Don Loudon?
Four.
Does that include for Julie to make payment upon purchase, does that need to be included? Sorry.
I would think it does, unless you want us to be specific.
Unless someone objects.
I will make sure the minutes reflect that you have all, want the payment to be made by the clerk treasurer immediately.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, the microphone didn't pick that up when you said it.
Next item on the agenda is the authorized dedication of right-of-way. Mr. Cannon?
Sorry, Julie threw me off there. It may work, I don't know, it's, sorry. So for the Dan Jones widening project, as you guys know, we're widening Dan Jones from US 36 to County Road 100 North, and I know you guys are aware that we own the parcel in the southeast corner of 100 North and Dan Jones. When we built the roundabout, we purchased the whole property and we've kind of just maintained that remnant just for something like this situation to occur, which is, we do need a little bit of right-of-way from it for the Dan Jones widening Phase III project. So in order for that to be dedicated, we, it's just kind of a switch from one hand to the other hand, and so we actually own it just as regular property, but we need to dedicate it as right-of-way. And so basically tonight, we're just asking for you guys to swap it between those two hands to just dedicate that piece of property as right-of-way versus just property that the town owns and so that it can be used for the road improvement project. I'm happy to answer any questions. It's a really small sliver, there was an exhibit in your packet that showed you guys the piece of property just right on the south side that needs to be dedicated.
Any questions for Mr. Cannon? And we're gonna dedicate the full parcel, not a piece of it.
No, we're just gonna dedicate the little piece of it, so we're just gonna dedicate the piece we need, which keeps it so that we can keep it, yeah, it's in your exhibit and so that the rest of the property the town owns. If you make it all right-of-way, then utilities and anybody can use that property, so we only want it to be right-of-way, what's actually needed for the project, that allows the town to maintain the control on the use of the rest of the property.
Okay.
So that roundabout will be widened there?
No, the roundabout won't be widened, it, so the roundabout already has two approaches and so our two lanes will just tie right into the two lanes of the roundabout. But there is, in the original traffic study, when we designed the roundabout, there was the potential that eventually we would need like a bypass lane like we did at 100 South where right-turning traffic would actually need to bypass the actual roundabout, so the level of services around about was good. So we kept that property in case that ever happened, which if you remember, when we were approached to sell it by Wawa or Blue Peninsula, we were skeptical to do that because there's the potential that we would need that for future road improvements, but we would want to dedicate that at the time we actually need it, not until then.
Just one question, out of curiosity, if we were to, had to buy that piece of right-of-way, what would that have cost us? Not, not that we own it, say it, I own it.
If I had to buy it from someone else? Well, probably, yeah, again, I'm just guessing, probably $2,000 to $5,000, but then you have your expenses for appraising and everything else, so you know, it probably would end up being $5,000 to $10,000 in the end by the time we get it.
So by owning it, we save $5,000 to $10,000.
Right, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions for Mr. Cannon? Somebody like to make a motion?
I make a motion that we authorize the dedication of right-of-way as presented.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Jason Puckett?
Four.
Greg Zuzen?
Four.
Don Loudon?
Four.
Robert Pope?
Four.
Bill Holland?
Four.
Next item on the agenda is the engagement letter for the GO bond with Ice Miller. Is this the same thing that we looked at last week?
No, so if you, yeah, so if you remember, there's, we're actually proposing to do two bonds, there's a food and beverage bond, which is for the parks improvements, and then there's a general obligation bond, which is to do the roadwork, which would be the raceway in County Road 100 North and the roundabout at 900 in Angelina. So the GO bond is to pay for the roadwork. So at your last meeting, you approved the engagement letters for the food and beverage bond, so this is for the GO bond.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions for Mr. Cannon?
You know, being the new guy, GO meaning general obligations or?
Correct, yeah, GO is a general obligation bond, meaning it's property taxes used to pay, pay it back.
I had to kind of laugh when I look at the additional fees for legal services and they included long-distance telephone charges, do those exist anymore?
Sometimes, yes, not very often. We will avoid those with teach.
I'm sure they don't have rotary dial phones in their offices.
I don't think they do, but I think they do have a New York office or something like that, so maybe if it applies to them, I don't know. We'll make sure that it doesn't get charged, don't worry.
Any other questions for Mr. Cannon? Would somebody like to make a motion?
Are we okay to approve both of these in one?
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve the engagement letters for the GO bond, both Ice Miller and FSG as presented.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Bill Holland?
Four.
Jason Puckett?
Four.
Don Loudon?
Four.
Greg Zuzen?
Four.
Robert Pope?
Four.
Next item on the agenda is Resolution 2024-21 authorizing condemnation for County
Road 900 East and Charles Nelson Drive Roundabout. Cannon?
Yes, as you guys are aware, we are trying to build a roundabout at this intersection. We have made attempts with property owners, we did hire somebody who did appraisals and we made offers on those properties, we got back some offers that we felt were pretty unreasonable, we counter-offered with something we thought was reasonable, and then the property owners just said no and refused to counteroffer, so at that point, we're pretty well out of options, if there's, if there's no negotiation and they're basically refusing to sell, the only option we have is to move forward with condemnation. So there are two property owners there, if you guys recall, this was the location where the Home Two Suites Hotel was proposed at one point, so the difference is, they believe it has commercial value, which it does not have unless it's purchased by a commercial owner, when we do an appraisal, we do an appraisal for the property as it is, and so I think that seems to be the differential. Their argument is they think they can get the value of what Home Two Suites proposed to buy it from them, but obviously Home Two Suites is not buying it from them, so that's kind of why we have this difference in opinion of the value. And so unfortunately, you know, we don't like bringing these resolutions to you, but I think we're at a point where we have no other option other than to proceed with condemnation. We did present this to the redevelopment commission as well, the redevelopment commission doesn't have the power of condemnation, but we took it to them too because they are the ones who will actually pay the legal fees and then the cost of the right-of-way actually once we go through the process, so they did approve it, and so then it's here for you guys tonight to kind of take that final step. There is still the ability to negotiate even if we file the condemnation, which often happens, but if we don't start the legal process, the process keeps going. As you guys know, this project has already been delayed a year, we had actually hoped to have built this last year, and so at this point, we're kind of at an impasse and we're gonna lose next year's construction season if we don't get the condemnation done, so we would just like to move forward at this point. I'm happy to answer any questions and certainly if you have any questions about condemnation, Dan can answer those.
My only question is, when the proposed developer was looking to buy that for a hotel, did we rezone that property from residential to commercial?
You did, yes.
But we only did it for that purpose, so, correct?
Well, I'd have to go back and do specific review of what you did, I don't think it was specifically, you gave it a commercial zoning district.
But we did that one because we knew the developer was looking.
But if another commercial use came along, they would still be able to develop it as a commercial use.
Subject to whatever restrictions you would have placed upon it, you may have eliminated some uses and that sort of thing, so.
Okay.
But the zoning doesn't dictate how it's appraised.
Okay.
It's the use, how is it being used, and the highest and best use, the same standards apply. And we, we're just really far apart, unfortunately.
Any other?
In it, as a general comment, I, I'm never comfortable with condemnation of someone's personal property unless it is for the betterment of the community as a whole, as this case is. I mean, we need that road improvement there for safety purposes and, and it's not a private development, it's for roads, and so for that reason, this is different in my mind.
So does that sound like you're making a motion then, is that what that was?
I'm making a comment so that everyone else can.
Mr. Holland?
I'd like to have a comment before we start down.
Sure.
So, is it, Dan, are we allowed to know what the bids were that came in, the three bids, and we take the middle one, is that correct?
No, you mean in the condemnation process?
Yeah.
No, the, the court appoints three appraisers, they, they have to agree to, they agree with the numbers.
I understand how the courts process works, did we do that ourselves when we, before we offered them a?
No, what we do is, we engage appraisers who then appraise it, we're required to show that appraisal to the owners and make an offer and give them 30 days to consider our offer. They, we did that, and then they did not come back to us with an appraisal that said something else, they just made a counteroffer which was dramatically different than ours.
So can we know what that offer was?
Sure, you certainly can. Brad, do you have that?
You want me to say that loud?
I'm asking whether we should or not. I mean, if we shouldn't do it, then I'm not gonna ask.
Sure. So on one parcel, the appraised value was $24,900 and they offered $52,165. The other parcel was, we offered $5,900 and they counteroffered at $81,000. And then I made counteroffers, I counteroffered the first one at $27,265 and I counteroffered, or sorry, I counteroffered $32,900.
On the first one then?
On the first one.
Thirty-two what?
So I went up $8,000, $32,900.
Okay.
And I did the same on parcel six, I counteroffered 8,000, or sorry, 4,000, oh no, 8,000 more, $13,900 on the other parcel.
Okay. What are the sizes?
One is .158 acres and the other one is .106 acres.
Okay.
And the structures that are currently on these are vacant commercial buildings?
No, they're single-family homes.
Residential.
They're residential.
Actually rentals, I think, or at least one of them is.
Yeah, I don't know if they're rentals or not, but they're, they're single-family homes.
There are occupants living there?
We believe so, yes, yeah.
We don't think that the tape will affect that at all, it's just a little piece off the west side of the property and we don't think it impacts the structures in any way, not that kind of a tape, it's just a small piece off of western side of both these lots. And, and the owners rejected our counteroffer, did not make another offer to us, and we just, we're at a standstill. Okay. Thank you, I think that's, you know, I think that's a lot of good information for you all to know when we decide what we're gonna do here. I too agree that we shouldn't be condemning people's property, but when you make a good faith effort and it's for the betterment of the community, sometimes you just don't have a choice.
Right.
Any other questions?
Not a question, only a comment, and I'm sorry I didn't do this sooner, Ryan, to do this here, the bottom in, before our signatures on the document says represented a majority of the redevelopment commission, I think we'll need to.
We caught it and fixed it already. Julie caught it, I won't say we, Julie caught it, it's fixed on the one you'll sign tonight.
Thank you.
Would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll be the bad guy. I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 2024-21 authorizing the condemnation for County Road 900 East and Charles Nelson Drive Roundabout.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Don Loudon?
Four.
Robert Pope?
Four.
Bill Holland?
Four.
Jason Puckett?
Four.
Greg Zuzen?
Four.
Next item on the agenda is the final reading of ordinance 2024-39, general obligation bond ordinance. Mr. Taylor?
Yes, this is, sorry, this is second reading of an ordinance which would appropriate the proceeds from the GO bond into your budget, and the contemplation is that we expect the bond proceeds to be $2 million, that $2 million is not in your budget, this is the way that it gets placed in your budget as an appropriation so that you can spend that money in 2024 for the road projects that are contemplated.
Any questions for Mr. Taylor? If there are none, would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance 2024-39, general obligation bond ordinance as presented.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Greg Zuzen?
Four.
Bill Holland?
Four.
Don Loudon?
Four.
Jason Puckett?
Four.
Robert Pope?
Four.
Next item on the agenda is the final reading of ordinance 2024-40, additional appropriation ordinance.
Yeah, in public hearing.
And I'm sorry?
Public hearing. So I'll introduce it for you, Greg.
Okay, right, I'm doing that, got it. Mr. Taylor?
Since the, the GO bonds involve property taxes, in order to finalize that process, you have to allow the public the right to comment on the use of property taxes, so even though these property taxes are gonna be, are gonna come through you in the form of a bond, it's still the use of property taxes.
form of a bond, it's still the use of property taxes. So when it's, when these budgeted items are not in your original budget and you want to add them during the year, you must give the public the right to speak on that issue. After you give the public the right to speak, then you will vote on formally putting that money into your budget. So you just need to ask for a public comment at that time. Then if that, you can vote on the Resolution 2024-40.
Let's open the public hearing then at 7:28. If you'd like to come forward, state your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes regarding the final reading of Ordinance 2024-40, Additional Appropriation. With nobody coming forward, then we will close the public hearing portion and move back to the approval of the final reading of Ordinance 2024-40, Additional Appropriation Anything further, Mr. Taylor? No, you can vote on the resolution now when someone makes a motion. If there are no questions, would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve Ordinance 2024-40 for the additional appropriation as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Roll call, please.
Robert Pope?
Four.
Greg Zuzen?
Four.
Don Loudon?
Four.
Bill Holland?
Four.
Jason Puckett?
Four.
Next item is a public hearing and introduction of Ordinance 2024-41, County Road 571, Street Vacation.
Yeah, I'll walk you guys through this. If you have any questions about the legal process, I'll defer that to Dan. But we were requested by Pasari LLC, who's the developer of Eastern Gray, to vacate a portion of County Road 571 East. And you may ask yourself, well, why would the town vacate a road? Well, they're really vacating the piece that's underneath because the alignment of the new road on the entrance will be in a different location. So we're vacating this piece, and then they will rededicate a new location of the public street. There will still be a public street at 571. It may not be called 571, but there will continue to be a road at that location. It's just the alignment's not necessarily going to be the same. And there's really two reasons this is important. One, they need to vacate that piece. But when NDOT did the US 36 widening project next to this right of way, NDOT has purchased two pieces of right of way on both sides. And NDOT won't vacate the right of way unless the town vacates the 571 a right of way. So this is kind of, we're the first step in the process, but then NDOT's going to vacate the right of way. If NDOT doesn't vacate the right of way, some of the design that that Eastern Gray has proposed, they can't actually accomplish because NDOT's right of way goes up into some of the buildings. And so this is a little bit unusual, I know, for you guys to see, but it is for good reason. We've gone through this process. We've worked with NDOT, and that's kind of what has gotten us here today. We are following the statute for street vacation. We've notified people by certified mail. There's only three property owners that are impacted by this, and that's Pasari, and it's NDOT. And actually, two of the properties are NDOT because they're noticed to two different NDOT parcels, but they're both NDOT. So this is a public hearing, so you guys have to open the public hearing and see if anybody comes forward unless they have the opportunity to say, no, I'm going to lose access. We don't believe anybody's going to lose access as a result of this, so we don't see any reason why the council couldn't move forward with the street vacation. So I'm happy to answer any questions to that effect.
And you're comfortable that once we do this, NDOT will then follow through?
We do. NDOT has said NDOT will vacate it as soon as the town council vacates it.
Any other questions for Mr. Cannon?
No, I'll just make a comment that, you know, county roads with ending in a one are dead-end streets. So, I mean, it's really not affecting anyone other than the parcel owners there that you mentioned, so.
Robert? You said they've agreed to vacate the property NDOT has as well. Is there any protection just in case that doesn't happen? Can we gain the right of way back? Is there another process that we can back out of this?
Well, not that I know of. I mean, I mean, the, we could work with Pasari, and they could, they could transfer it back to us, you know, because when you do a vacation, what happens is, when you vacate that right of way, then the owner of the land becomes the two property owners on each side. And so we've obviously been working with Pasari on this whole road thing. But so we, our option would be go back to the owner and say, will you dedicate that back because, you know, you don't need it. We have had a very good relationship with them. That would be, but that's all you can do.
Sure.
The vacation allows to, if you think about it, our right of way just sits on top of property, that's what it does. So we take it off. We're not giving anybody anything. They already own the land under it. We're just taking that roadway off, saying that can't be used for public right of way anymore. So if we needed to ask for them to rededicate it because it was necessary for their project and benefited their project, I am sure they would do that. They want the public access.
I also expect that it'd be highly unlikely that NDOT would back out of this. I just, I wanted to see what the level of protection we had.
They're going to have to dedicate back a public street because they can't build their development without building the public street. So they're going to have to remedy it somehow and provide a new public right of way. Otherwise, they couldn't move forward with the development.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Cannon? Let us open the public hearing then for ordinance, the introduction of ordinance 2024-41, County Road 571, Street Vacation. Please state your name and address when you come forward and limit your comments to three With nobody coming forward, then we'll close that portion of the public hearing, and we'll show that we have introduced Ordinance 2024-41, County Road 571, Street Vacation. Next item on the agenda is the introduction of Ordinance 2024-42, Amending the 2024 Salary Ordinance. Mr. Cannon?
Yeah, as you guys know, the town council approves the pay for all of our employees, and you guys set the maximum amount paid. And so we do amend this ordinance from time to time as things do change throughout the year. And so there are two changes requested by staff. The first one, as you guys are aware, in the budget, I had talked about eliminating the communications director position and creating a marcom manager position. And so I've put that pay in there and basically struck the communications director position. And so you guys can see there too as well what the difference is between the two pays that for those positions. The second piece in Shelby's here for, if you guys have particular questions, but in order to hire and maintain good quality part-time groundkeepers, our current pay is $18.62. And so we are requesting that the town council increase that part-time groundskeeper pay to $20 an hour, so that we can make sure that we're able to hire and attract people that will stay here and actually do work for us as well. So if you guys have questions about how Shelby derived that $20, $20 an hour, she can, I think she did an analysis that she'd be happy to share with you guys if you have questions. Otherwise, Shelby and I are happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Any questions for Mr. Cannon or for Shelby?
Shelby, so this is in line with what the township and the county pays for their groundskeepers?
Yeah, the research that I've done throughout Hendricks County, the pay range for parks, groundskeeping employees is anywhere from $20 to $30 an hour. Some areas do offer a shift differential for those that work on weekends, so I'm not ready to offer that as this part-time employee is, that's part of their job. But I thought 20 was a good number to raise that to, just based on the comps in the area.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Shelby? My only comment on your Exhibit A on the page that we just showed, the town judge on there is zero. Just delete that.
Yeah, I was going to hold that for a year, and just so that if anyone ever looked back, they'd see that. But then when I do the 2025 salary ordinance, we'll just eliminate the position. And we'll do the same thing. I think the court clerk is still on there as well. Yeah, the court administrator. And so I'll remove that as well after, when we move to 2025.
If there are no further questions, let us show then we have introduced Ordinance 2024-42, Amending the 2024 Salary Ordinance.
I may ask, if you guys want to do it fine, because I know you haven't approved the budget yet, but we did propose to get the ordinance in for the ordinance, and actually said that we're going to go back to the. That we'd go back to the start of the last pay period. It would help our accounting a little bit because if we, if you guys wait to do it till October 10th, we'll have to back pay two weeks. So it'd make it easier if you guys approved it tonight. You don't have to. If you guys want to think about it, that's fine. I completely understand. That's your normal process. But if you would consider it, that would make Kathy's job much easier.
So in order to do that, then we need somebody to make a motion to amend the rules, add it to the agenda, and we need a unanimous vote? If anybody's prepared to do that?
I'll make a motion that we amend the rules and add the 2024-42, Amending the 2024 Salary Ordinance, to our agenda for vote tonight.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Don Loudon?
Four.
Jason Puckett?
Four.
Bill Holland?
Four.
Robert Pope?
Four.
Greg Zuzen?
Four.
Then let's move then to the final reading of Ordinance 2024-42, Amending the 2024 Salary Ordinance. Mr. Cannon, has anything changed since the last time we talked about this?
No, sir.
Shelby, has anything changed?
Would somebody like to make a motion then?
Make a motion that we adopt Ordinance 2024-42, Amending the 2024 Salary Ordinance as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Robert Pope?
Four.
Bill Holland?
Four.
Jason Puckett?
Four.
Don Loudon?
Four.
Greg Zuzen?
Four.
That was a lot of twos and fours.
Next item on the agenda is the public hearing and introduction of Ordinance 2024-43, Adopting the 2025 Budget Appropriation. Mr. Cannon?
Yeah, this may look a little different this year, and I'm not sure why we haven't done this in the past, but Julie has pointed out to me that really in the gateway, we're supposed to pass either a resolution or an ordinance. And normally, we just have the town council approve the budget without actually making it an ordinance. So at Julie's request, and with Dan's assistance, we actually drafted it as a, as a budget ordinance, which is actually how you guys should approve it going forward. So I know this looks a little different, but we probably should have been doing this in the first place. And so this will be our new practice going forward. We did have to notice and add. So you guys do have to do a public hearing. I won't go in a lot of a detail in the budget. There's a lot of information in here, but I'll walk through a little bit what documents you have. The first one is the budget appropriations. This is what we commonly refer to as the Form 4. This is actually what you guys, the budget is that you guys technically approve is the Form 4. And so that's just each fund and what the total budget is. While that's nice, it doesn't provide very much information. And so then your Exhibit B is actually the Form 1s by unit, and it's actually printed out of the gateway. So we printed that to show you guys what that actually looks like in the gateway. Those are the Form 1s. The information in the, the Form 4 is the same. They add up to the same amounts. And so it's just, the Form 1s are the more greater detail. And what's in that Form 1 by unit is the same thing that's in the Form 1s that I provide you guys. Actually, I provide those Form 1s to Financial Solutions Group, and they enter them into the gateway. So it's the same information. It just looks a little bit different in the different columns. The next one then I provided is the summary of budget changes, which is really what I went over with you guys over the last three meetings, of all the changes that were made to the budget and what increases we made. The one thing that I would add that's different, that if you go to the very last page, what I have presented you guys tonight is a balanced budget based on, on what our financial advisor has advised us to do. So every, all the account lines, all the non-general fund and the general funds are all balanced. And in order for me to accomplish that, I tracked so that you guys can see what I did. And so I'm going to walk through those really quick, just so that you guys are aware. And again, it's on the last page, and it says, "How have we balanced the general fund?" Because if you guys recall, that was the one that was out of balance and that had to be reduced. So the first one, Brian talked about this at the last meeting. The police reduced some of their capital and supply spending that they proposed to do in 2025, and then they plan to purchase that with some 2024 budget underspending. And so again, they'll still get everything that they need. They'll just use some money that they underspent this year to pay for that. We reduced health insurance placeholder. We had originally put in 10%, but we got confirmation from AIM that it would be 3%. And so that allowed us to reduce the budget in that case as well. That was about $80,000 that that brought our health insurance costs down. The next one was, I had increased some of our legal expenses, and I simply shifted that from the general fund to edit stormwater and MVH. So basically, the 3% reduction earlier freed up some space in the other places to then move some of those legal expenses. And it was basically a $5,000 for $5,000. I had proposed increasing the budget in the town manager budget by $5,000 to purchase computers. Over the last couple of years, we replaced everybody, basically post-pandemic. We put everybody onto laptops. And so we don't necessarily have as much expenses, so I just cut that $5,000. We'll continue to do our rotation schedule. Cutting that $5,000 won't prevent us from doing that. Instead, we just may not replace quite as many computers. The next thing I cut in the general fund was $15,000 for a summer intern. That's been in the budget for at least probably the last couple of years, but I've never hired one. So quite honestly, having a summer intern takes a lot of time, and I don't know that I necessarily have time to spend with that summer intern. So I think that just made sense to cut that from the general fund budget. The sixth thing I did was, I shifted, if you guys recall, in the, from the '24 budget, we added two positions with an expectation of being able to operate additional parks as a result of our new park development that we're doing, that we would need operational support to be able to maintain those parks. So we budgeted for two full-time positions in the general fund for the Parks Department. I shifted half of the groundskeeper position from the general fund to food and beverage. So now there's one and a half employees in the general fund, and there's the half of a groundskeeper in the food and beverage fund. That was about a $30,000 savings to do that. And then in the public works budget, I moved 50% of, Steve was experiencing some higher, he had increased his budget by about 50% for water utility payments, which is the sprinkler systems for some of the roundabouts and things like that. So I shifted about 50% of his water utility payments from the general fund to the MVH. In the other funds, I kind of mentioned some of these as I went. In order, because I shifted things into the food and beverage fund, that meant I had to cut some things from the food and beverage fund. So I provided those two. In food and beverage, I reduced the trail design by $7,000. That's a capital expenditure, so it had $50,000 in it. So now we're just going to spend $43,000 instead of $50,000. And then we had estimated engineering for the White Lake Creek Bridge in the Summerlot Park at $200,000, and so we reduced that by $25,000. And so instead of $200,000, we'll do $175,000 worth of engineering in 2025. So that allowed me to then budget the food and beverage fund, or balance food and beverage fund. And then the final thing, since I moved some expenses to MVH, I had to also make a cut out of MVH. And so Steve had asked for $150,000 to do a capital improvement on Avon Village Parkway. And so instead of that being 150, I cut that down to be 143,000, which made up that $7,000 shift, and thereby balancing all of the funds. The one thing that I would still have remaining is, and that's on your sheet, it's highlighted in yellow, I still need to identify the other in number three in the levy appeal of 144. And so I'll work on that with my staff on that and have that ready for you guys, hopefully for the adoption, the budget on October 10th.
Any questions for Mr. Cannon? Any questions for Mr. Cannon?
Yeah, this is a lot of information being thrown here.
If you guys have any questions, tonight is the night to do it. That's why I'm saying, I would like you guys to ask the questions tonight.
I don't know that we want to be here tonight. We were thinking it might be best to have a work session.
Well, if you remember, at the last work, at the last council meeting, we actually offered a work session to everyone, and everyone declined for this purpose because we thought you guys were all on board with this balanced budget that Ryan and I have presented you. If you want to do a work session, that is fine, but that is why we offered it before this tonight's meeting, and everyone declined. So I have notified the DLGF that we will be adopting, and I do have to do these notifications and public hearings and these newspaper notifications. So that's why it was so important to make sure that we had all these questions answered, and we gave you this information since the beginning of August so that if you had questions, we could answer them before October 10th.
You've done this for many years.
Yes.
There's a couple of brand-new council members on here that, at least my experience in budgets is not typical of towns and cities. So I don't know that I feel comfortable after going through that and hearing some of the things that have gone on and where we are, that I would prefer a small work session as soon as possible to go through some of this stuff. Maybe those senior people in the council will have some guidance on some of the questions that we may have.
I think what I'm hearing is, Bill, you're not necessarily wanting to change anything, although that might be the case, but that you're trying to get some experience in this. You now have questions now that you've walked through this process, and you'd like to go over those in a little more detail. Is that what I'm feeling as a group, as the council as a whole?
Part of that changes, I don't know yet.
Sure.
Jason, you're the other new one.
Yeah, I agree with Bill. I'm in the same boat here. It's not that I necessarily have, you know, X, Y, and Z that I want to change right now, but there's a lot of things that I just, questions I didn't even know to ask and things that have come up that I'd like to take another look at. I think, I think a work session would be a good idea for me to understand what exactly it is that I'm approving.
Robert, any comment?
Well, I.
And they said no.
I was one that said no. I didn't think we needed it at the same time. I don't want, I want to make, we all got to be on board with our budget. It's our, probably our most important thing. I want to make sure you two are comfortable with everything that's on there, and you guys understand what you're dipping your toes into. This also puts an incredible amount of pressure and trouble on the staff and Julie. I think we've been in the situ, not this particular situation before, but I think we've been in challenging situations before. We're, we will find a way to resolve this. I, I would, if our two newbies, forgive me, are wanting to talk about this further in detail, I gotta support them.
That's how I felt about it as well.
And I'm not so sure it's gonna take that much time. And maybe everything will stay the same. And we're not, we're not voting on this until the next town council meeting anyway. So I think we have a few short days that we could probably afford.
What I would ask then that you do, because I know Julie has asked for at least the last thirty days that if we had any issues to get with her.
And no one has asked me.
And so if there are, there must be some items that you need clarification, you need guidance through, that's fine. I agree with Robert. We're all one, and you're new, and you're at a disadvantage, and we want to bring you up to the level that we have. Now, it might take more than one work session, but I can't help you there. Okay? If you do have anything, get it to her sooner than later. And, you know, I would suggest that the work session not be prior to our next meeting because if there are any changes that do come about, we need to re-advertise things, and we wouldn't have time to do that if we did it at that meeting. But I don't know what everybody else's schedule is, so.
Is anyone available Saturday morning?
I have surgery tomorrow. I, I'll be available on Monday.
Monday evening after work?
Monday works for me.
Does that work for Dan?
I have a dinner engagement Monday evening.
We can't notice Monday.
Oh, yeah. I need forty-eight hours.
Is that forty-eight business hours?
Yeah, I need forty-eight hours.
Weekends. It is.
Yeah. Yeah, I need Tuesday.
I'm available Tuesday, Tuesday the first. What time are you looking at? What time are you thinking?
Five, five-thirty.
I'm available, you said the first, I'm available anytime in the afternoon.
The first, I'm not available. My daughter has a concert at the same time. I feel like this is more for you guys. So that's, I am less important in this particular work session. That's Tuesday, Robert, that you? Yes, that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, Tuesday the first.
Yeah, Tuesday's the first. I'm available anytime after two o'clock that day.
Robert, would you be available if it were the third, the Thursday? Would that matter?
In the, in the evening, yes.
How about the second, the third doesn't work because there's a chamber function that evening. The second I'm waiting to.
I can, I can do Tuesday afternoon, Tuesday evening.
I can do Tuesday afternoon.
I can do Tuesday.
I can do Tuesday afternoon after about 3:30.
Tuesday the first at 3:30.
Tues, I'm sorry, forgive me. You said Tuesday the first afternoon, I'm good. Yes, forgive me. I was looking at Wednesday.
So let me ask you this question, Julie. If changes do come out of this meeting, do we have enough time to follow the proper procedures and protocol to still vote on this at our next meeting on the 10th? I believe it is the 10th.
Is, yeah, you're set for final adoption October 10th.
Right.
I mean, if we can meet Tuesday or Wednesday of next week, we need to make sure when Dan's available. We can't.
See, part of the answer is, it's not hard to do it. It's just that depending on what changes you make, then that will affect what approval votes are needed. There are many, many rules about what you have to do. So you've advertised a budget. You have, you cannot adopt a budget that's higher than you've advertised. In addition, if you, if you plan to adopt any line item for salary that's higher than what you advertised, you have to go through special procedures for this. And this is why Greg has a good idea not to do this the day of your meeting because things would have to be done once we figure out what all the numbers are.
I don't think those, those two items that you're talking about are, I'm not trying to speak for them, but certainly are not of a concern to me.
Well, that's not exclusive list of the things that have to happen after.
That's too gone. What are the rest of?
So I'm just saying that when you, when someone says, though, what do you have to do if you, this, this is why we can't answer the question until we know what changes are being made. It's an impossible question to answer. But if you do it, if you do it next week, there is sufficient time to make those adjustments. You can't do it the day, you couldn't do it on the 10th. It would just be impossible.
And don't forget, any changes you make, if it's to the general fund, now Ryan and I will have to play, you know, that affects everything. So like he had to take all that, what, sixty thousand dollars and then move that, move that, move that, and now we got to rebalance everything. So that's gonna take time.
So Dan, your, what is your schedule next week? You're not available Tuesday, Wednesday?
No. I am available Tuesday from four o'clock on. Wednesday, I'm not available that, in the evening. Thursday, I am available anytime. Anytime in the afternoon.
We had said Tuesday at 3:30, but we could bump it to four. Can we bump that to four for Dan?
Yeah, if you made it four, that works for me. I can get here.
And I'm fine with, I understand Robert's commitment, but if he can get there at four, and if he has to leave at 4:30 or 5:00, so be it.
I could be there at four. I, I need to leave about 5:30, about 5:15. So yep, that would work for me.
All right.
October the first at 4:00 PM work session.
And will he notice that tomorrow?
I will notice it first thing in the morning.
Before we do move on, I do want to open the public hearing for this, though. So at this point in time, I'd like to open the public hearing for ordinance 2024-43, adopting the 2025 budget appropriations. If you come forward, please state your name and address and limit your comments to three minutes. With nobody coming forward, we'll close that portion of the public hearing, and we'll show that we have introduced ordinance 2024-43, adopting the 2025 budget appropriations.
Casper, just, sorry, I don't want to belabor anything, but can you guys give me some direct, should I invite all my department heads? Do we need all the department heads at the meeting? Can I get some direction on what you guys would like to see or who you want to be there?
I don't know that I need the department heads there necessarily.
I don't. I'm, I'm gonna be here to show support for my other two, our council members, and if they have issues, they need to tell you. I have no issues. Anything else, Mr. Cannon?
No, sir. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the introduction of ordinance 2024-44, corrective ordinance for Mission Foods rezoning. Mr. Cannon or Mr. Taylor? This is a little unusual. So what happens in this? This is a ordinance which is you, being used to correct a air made in an ordinance back last May. So when you approve the rezoning of the Mission Foods, you imposed quite a few conditions and asked for commitments from the petitioner. And your conditions and commitments were slightly different than what the planning commission recommended to you. So the ordinance before you that night in May had what the planning commission recommended as conditions and commitments. And so you made changes. And so then what happened, our staff, in its interest in being ever efficient, recorded that ordinance and had you sign the ordinance at your meeting, recorded the next day, and did not make the changes to the actual conditions that you made that evening. So then when the petitioner submitted the commitment form, which is required under your zoning ordinance, they did it exactly right. And to their credit, they included exactly what you approved at your meeting, and that did not line up with what was in the ordinance, the erroneous ordinance that had been recorded. It had everything right except that the little details about a landscaping berm that you guys changed during your meeting. So the way we fix that is we come along with this ordinance, which says that the ordinance to 20,000, 2024-13 actually had an error. We want to correct the error. You can see in this ordinance, it says, here's the error. This is what, what it said. And then you look at the top of page two, and you can see what you all approved at your meeting. And so this ordinance would correct that error and would then line up the ordinance with the commitment form that was prepared by Mission Foods, which was correct. And that way, thirty years in the future, when someone has to deal with this, they don't look at these two documents and say, we've got a little problem here, Houston, these aren't consistent. And so this is, this is all this is. This is correcting a Scrivener's error that in our haste, we, we didn't get quite right. This is introduction only. Any questions for Mr. Taylor? Then let us show them we have introduced ordinance 2024-44, corrective ordinance for Mission Foods rezoning. Moving on to legal council report, Mr. Taylor. I have nothing new for you. It's a busy time with your two bonds and your staff and your projects, but I appreciate working with Mr. Cannon and your department heads to, Shelby keeps buying new parks. It's been busy. A mower today, a park, yeah. Next item on the agenda is the second of two public comment opportunities. The public may comment on items on the agenda that are not a public hearing or on a specific matter within the council's jurisdictions. If you come forward, please state your name and address and limit your comments to three minutes. If nobody coming forward, we'll close that portion of the agenda and move on to council comment. Any comments from any council members? Let's move on to council calendar. Mr. Cannon?
Yeah, October 1st, 4:00 PM will send you a meeting invite, budget work session. Then your next meeting is October 10th at 7:00 PM. We do have a work session before that meeting at 5:30 PM.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.